Well, everybody says we're ready and it's six o'clock. So at this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Stacy Ross of the Northridge Free Will Baptist Church to come up and give her implication. You all stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we love you today. You are great and awesome, worthy of our praise and worthy of our devotion. We thank you, Lord, for the freedoms we have in our nation to live in accordance to your will, to live kind of in freedom and to do what we want to do. We thank you, Father, for all the many blessings you've given us. We pray for our council members tonight that you'd give them wisdom and help them to make good and godly decisions, help them to make decisions that would bless and prosper our town and make it possible for the community to flourish and just to do good and to be good. Father, we love you, we praise you, we ask you to guide us in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Swager, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start, if anybody hadn't signed in, please do so. And before I wrap it to order, everybody keep, you know, we've been, we've been kind of hit, the city's been kind of hit the last few weeks with retirees that have passed, good people that did a lot of work for the city. Raymond Sandoval, Jerry Keenan, I understand, has passed yesterday. And everybody keep Cindy Firston in your thoughts and prayers. Her mom passed away today, I believe. And I think there's one other one I'm missing, but anyway, they were all dedicated employees.
Boskis, Julian Boskis.
Oh, yeah, Julian Boskis. Right. So anyway. Well, yes, he did. And that's been a while back. We should have, we should have really had a celebration in his life, Tracy. He was a good guy. So anyway, I'll call this meeting to order. Attendance roll call, agenda item number two.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Alvedres.
Present.
Sanchez.
Setser.
Present.
Hoffman. Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Dunham.
Here.
Agenda item, agenda item number three is approval of consent agenda. I believe, Mr. Swager, you have some?
We still have, these have already been paid, so we've still got one more invoice that has not been paid. And I'd like for Mr. Dunham to hold that.
So what invoice are we talking about? He already talked to you.
What invoice?
It's the final invoice for Multicom at the Nash Soccer Complex. The invoice amount is for $485,502.94.
And there are some questions about that, so Mr. Dunham is going to do a little bit of research.
Good.
So with that being said, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item three.
Second. I have a motion in two seconds.
Swager.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to accept the 2020 annual financial audit prepared by Finley, Cook, CPAs as presented by Crawford and Associates. So the stage is all yours, Mr. Crawford.
I love the stage. I've never met a microphone I didn't like, so. Thank you for carving out a little bit of time to talk about everybody's favorite subject tonight, you know, accounting and audit. I promise not to take too much of your time, but should be two documents in front of you, one that's mine and one not mine. So the big, thick one is not mine. That's the audited financial statements. Actually, that's 104 pages long. 102 pages of it are the city's financials and note disclosures, and two pages of it belong to the auditor. All the auditor does basically in this audit is they look at all the numbers that the city has put together and they render an opinion as to whether or not those numbers are correct. We call it a clean opinion in the vernacular of the audit world. And so within the first few pages, which are marked in the introductory section, you'll see two or three pages on Finley and Cook's letterhead with several paragraphs, but basically the paragraph that means the most is that, in their opinion, the financial statements are clean. They are free of material misstatement. Unfortunately, what the audits don't do very well is explain what the numbers mean. And so that's why we usually set the 104 pages one aside, and then we look at the other one that's got pretty colors on it that's only about 20 something pages long, because this is the performatory. And if you remember, what we do with that is we try to take these 104 pages and we, we look at the financial performance and the financial position of the city, and we combine them, and we try to come up with a score on a scale of one to 10, with 10 representing excellent financial health and success, and a one or a zero representing poor financial health and success. And then we track that from year to year so you can kind of see what that score does. So we'll probably talk more about that than we will the audit unless you have any questions about it. But we've taken the audit now that we know that the numbers are clean and that the numbers are right, and we plug them into our system and our formula that we've developed. And I'll probably flip you to page five, and I won't go through every page on this, but I just want to cover a couple of highlights. Page five is the summary page where we track about 10 years' worth of data, the financial health and success of the city over the last 10 years. And we put it together in one of two or three different ways. Some people like to see pictures, and so usually to the left you'll see a bar chart or a graph or something that will explain what we're looking at. And then on the right side, you'll see narrative, so if you'd rather read a few sentences about what this graph or what this measurement represents. And then for those of you that want the quick out, you look at the little red, yellow, and green speedometer up in the corner, and if it's in the green, then you know that that's obviously a good score. If it's in the yellow, it's okay. And if it's in red, it probably needs some improvement. So overall, here's where, here's where our scores landed. For the year ended 12/31 of '20, we scored an 8.0, eight even. That's about a .6 decline from where we were at the end of last year or two years ago, 12/31 of '19. And again, you can point it to one factor, and that was the drop in sales tax. We collected less sales tax in fiscal '20 than what we did in fiscal '19 because, remember, we absorbed the beginning of COVID, starting in March or so, along with every ramification of sales tax from that point forward. So for a number of months, you collected less sales tax than what you normally would have been accustomed to in, let's say, a non-COVID year. Sales tax has rebounded in this year, probably outside of the first month of the year, you've probably had increases in every month of sales tax. So I think that was kind of a temporary COVID drop. So really, the rest of the ratios didn't change very much. We still performed very well. Last year, we actually performed at a 10. We scored a 10 on those metrics that represent performance. This year, we scored an 8.1 on the performance metrics, still really good, but just not as good as we were in the year before, again, probably mostly because of sales tax. However, we've improved our financial position from an 8.2 to an 8.7. So overall, even though the score dropped, we've actually strengthened our net position, our financial position, a little bit. That means we've got cash, we've got money to spend, whether it's hours generated by taxes, whether it's the feds that have gave us some money via the CARES or soon-to-be ARPA programs that we're going to get very soon. Did my microphone just go?
He's on it.
Am I on? Okay. So we've, we've got cash, and we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of money to spend. And so as long as we spend that money on capital, your scores aren't going to change very much because we're really just investing one asset into another asset. Where we start seeing the scores go down is when we start spending cash on regular, recurring, monthly expense. And you can kind of see that happened from about 2014 through 2017 in our chart on page five. And, you know, that's kind of when we had gotten to the lowest point possible. And then I think we took back over the city from the management company right about at the end of that period and then started running it very conservatively so that we could get that score back up where it had been accustomed to being, and we still stay at that level. To give you a little bit of perspective, there's never going to be a 10 scored on every ratio. It's impossible. It just can't happen. A government doesn't exist that operates that way. The highest score I've ever seen is a 9.1. So the fact that you had an 8.6 last year means that we're measuring against a really high abnormal year. So anywhere in the sevens is actually very, very good. So if we're in the eights, we're even, we're even better off. And so that's where we're hovering. That's kind of where we were prior to 2013, 2014. We've hovered in the, in the eights mostly. So that is pretty much where I think we need to kind of hover and stay around. And I think based on the budgets and based on everything I've seen, although we're going to be spending money, we're, we're spending money on stuff that is a capital asset, something that lasts, and investing that money in ourselves. So really, I could go through a number of these different ratios, but I'm probably going to skip around a little bit and, and just kind of flip to a couple of pages. Maybe the first one, let's look at, at page seven, where I kind of look at what I call the rainy day component of the, of the government-wide, which is what we call unrestricted net position. It's basically what we haven't spent yet that we can spend, but that money isn't restricted either. And so where does that number hover? And we typically like to see it hover, you know, right around 30% or so of your annual revenue stream. So we add up all the revenues and we, we measure that unrestricted net position, and we hit right about 31%. That's why when you look at the metric, it's right there at the five, because five is satisfactory. Again, that, that's government-wide. That means we're measuring not just the city, but also the Guyman Utility Authority also. Now, if you flip the page and you look just at the city side, and really just one fund of the city, which is the main operating fund of the city, the general fund, that's where we're pretty much flushing all of our normal, regular operational expenses through, along with all of our tax revenue, most of our unrestricted tax revenue. We have, we have, as you can see in the chart, we have really socked away a significant amount of fund balance. It's equivalent to 90% of the stream of revenue for the year, which means, in simple terms, you could literally go almost an entire year of not collecting a dime and then still spend your normal budget and be able to pay for it with cash. So that's a pretty hefty cushion. You'll score a 10 on that, on that ratio every time if you just have a 50% margin. So you've still got 40% cushion that if you wanted to spend, you could spend, yet still score the highest score possible. So that's a pretty hefty size of unassigned fund balance, and I'm quite sure that it's going to be put to good use because that's obviously what you're going to do with that fund balance. And notice that in the past 10 years, it hasn't really been there. It's been nowhere near that level. We've actually hovered, you know, in the teens or the, the even lower than the teens in a couple of years where fund balance has been pretty low. So it's nice to have built that back up. Now we just have to decide what we're going to do with that money. And that's obviously what you do when you go through the budget process. The next thing I'll probably flip to is a summary page, which summarizes the, the financial position ratios. It's on page 14. And basically what I try to do here is I just try to show you, since I've broken your 8.0 score down into three components, financial position is one component, financial performance is another component, and financial capability is a component. That really means sustainability. And I measure each one. Every group, set of metrics has their own little chart here. So on 14, you can kind of see what the financial position metrics have, have gauged over the last five or six years. And as I said, this year, we had an 8.7. So we actually improved our financial position this year because we still performed very well. That increases our financial position. But you don't have to go back very far to kind of see some of the years where that metric does not work very well, when we were scoring a 3.8 or a 3.9 or a 4.2. Those are situations where you must be having not very good performance that are eating away your financial position. And now that we've built our financial position back up, we score at an 8.7 level, again, a little bit better than our 8.2 that we had the year before. The next slide is the slide 21 that I'll point you to, which is another summary page. And this is the performance metrics that we talked about where I said last year, you scored a 10 on all six or seven metrics that we measure, and that's very difficult to do. So this year, although we performed very well at an 8.1, it wasn't as well as we did last year, therefore, the overall score goes down about .6 points. So, so our 8.1, still very well, but notice the one metric that looks different than all the others in every year is sales tax, where we had historically had increases over the last couple of years, and then we dropped down to a minus 3.8. Again, an abnormality because of COVID that I think is self-correcting, so not something that I would be terribly concerned about. The last summary page, the last set of metrics, is about what we call capability or sustainability. In other words, do we have enough in our metrics to, to sustain this level of performance and position over a long period of time? And on those metrics, those metrics don't change very much from year to year unless you go out to the debt market and issue a significant amount of debt, or you raise your tax levels up to a higher level where you're taxing the citizens at a higher rate. You still score almost a seven in the capability world. It's a 6.9, and that's been hovering around a seven or a 7.1 for the last few years. So capability-wise, we're, we're still fine. So that's the three scores that basically combined to produce the 8.0 that we see on page five. So really, nothing terribly exciting to, to kind of talk about. A good audit, a clean audit. Couple of things we're working on, budget amendments to try to, to try to get better at budget amendments toward the end of the year, but those are, those are kind of difficult to guess and are estimates at the end of the year anyway. But audits clean, the financials, performance looks great, and financial position looks great. So I think you've prepped yourself to do some things that a few years ago, we probably told you you couldn't do. So now we're back to where I think we've got some options. And now that's the hard part of trying to figure out what the priorities are and where we want to go and, and spend money and what we want to budget and what we want to do. And so that's where your job comes back into play. So a few years ago, your choices were limited. There wasn't much you could do other than just tread water. We're, we're past treading water now. We're, we're back. So. Any questions? Anything specific?
I do have one.
Sure.
If we would by chance decide to go out and borrow $5 million for two different projects, for instance, how would that affect?
You, it, it probably, depending on what you're borrowing the money for, it'll offset. So if you go out to the debt market, of which, by the way, you, you don't have a ton of debt, so you score really well on your debt coverages and your, your debt percentage of the budget that you might use for payments. So your score probably won't drop very much by issuing that debt. However, if you spent that money on operations, that would, that would go down, but I'm assuming you're not borrowing to spend on operations. You're going to reinvest that $5 million, which is going to change some of the other metrics. Your net position's going to go up, your total net position's going to go up, and your capital asset useful lives will grow because you'll be investing in longer-lived, newer assets. And so typically, it would be designed to offset. So only if you were really at your cap of your debt margins now, and then you go issue more debt, would you get penalized. But we've got quite a bit of room where we could borrow money and it not really affect the score, as long as we invest that money in capital.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we've got, we've got plenty of room to do that, and the model is designed to not penalize you just because you borrowed money. It depends on penalizing you for what you do with that money after you borrow it.
Thank you.
Do we have, on your comprehensive annual financial report?
Uh huh.
Lavona, do you have that? Do you have that in a PowerPoint or no?
Yes, I do.
The, the big, the 104-page report?
Yeah. Page five is what I wanted to put up there, and I just wanted to congratulate city staff, city manager at that time, and it was just when you came in, right around there. And I just wanted to point this page out. I mean, that's a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. How, how often is that handed out, or is that a normality there?
It's a, it's an award that's put out by the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, who basically produces a very strict set of guidelines that if you produce a comprehensive annual financial report, it has to meet about a 70-page checklist of, of criteria. There are probably, let's say there are 587 cities and towns in Oklahoma, there are probably less than seven that get this award. So that's impressive. You're, you're in the likes of, of the Edmonds of the world, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, you know, you're, you're in the big boy level now. Most governments don't go to the effort to put out this, they put out annual financial statements, they don't put out a CAFR or a comprehensive annual financial report. So this contains several different sections, like a statistical table in the back of 10 years of data. Most governments don't do those tables, so therefore, they don't issue those, those CAFRs or get that award. So, yeah, I think you're probably one of less than seven cities and towns that probably get this in Oklahoma.
Outstanding. Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up in, in the meeting, and congratulations to staff.
I also think it's, how many years have we gotten this now?
Many.
I think we started it back, maybe in the late 90s or right around the 99, 2000. So you, you may have been getting this award even long before those of you that are here on council.
Wind up back to 2000.
I think we started it in the, in the late 90s or early 2000s. So, so it's been, it's been, it's been there for a number of years, I know. So let's say a dozen plus.
Good deal. Fairly fast.
Thank you. You bet.
Any other questions, Mr. Crawford? Well, we want to thank you for coming out.
Oh, no worries. I always enjoy coming out. Appreciate it.
Have a safe trip.
Okay, will do. Thank you, guys.
I'll make a motion that we accept the 2020 annual financial audit prepared by Finley and Cook CPAs as presented, item four.
Second. I have a motion in a second.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to accept the 2020 performatory analysis as prepared, presented by Crawford and Associates.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2020 performatory analysis by, as prepared by and presented by Crawford and Associates.
Second. I have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 21-09 for the application to the ODOT Oklahoma Public Transit Revolving Fund for Program Year 2022. Commentary and resolution is attached. Anything you'd like to add? I think we do this every year, I think.
Yeah, this is a pretty routine item for us. Passage of this will allow us to get about $10,491 to go for the operations of the ride and the assistance of elderly.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 21-09 for the application to the ODOT Oklahoma Public Transit Revolving Fund for Program Year 2022.
Second. I have a motion in a second.
Setser.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on resolution number 21-10, a fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of $392,056 for the purchase of sanitation trucks ordered in 2020.
As a result of COVID, we did not get the sanitation trucks we ordered in May of 2020 until just recently, and this is just making that adjustment in our budget to pay for those vehicles as we'd planned. And that money comes out of our, our sanitation surcharge fee.
We didn't have this budgeted for this year.
We did not know when we were going to get those trucks in, and we kept being told, hey, you're getting, they're coming, they're coming, they're coming. So we never did add them back into this budget, is the reason they weren't added into the budget to begin with.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 21-10 for fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of $392,056 for the purchase of sanitation trucks ordered in 2020.
Second. I have a motion in a second.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve, approve resolution number 21-11, an amendment to the agreement establishing OMAG, the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group.
I don't have a whole lot of comment about this. OMAG has asked us, the OMAG Board of Trustees has asked us to pass this resolution. Basically, it changes the effective date of the agreement to read from, the effective date to read from a period that would, a period of 50 years after June 1st, 1977, to in perpetuity. Is the only change on that. And this is OMAG's request. You can see the comments from Mr. Petty, that this is more or less a routine, routine change, to avoid having to ask for extra extensions.
Okay. Any questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 21-11, an amendment to agree establishing OMAG.
Second. I have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to authorize the city manager to sign the acceptance documents for the airport rescue grant offer, grant number
This grant offer came in Monday, yesterday, and that's the reason for, this is for the reason for the amended agenda. They are giving us, FAA, AIP is giving us a 100% grant of $32,000 coming out of the Airport Rescue Grant Fund. I would recommend that you allow me to sign off on that and receive that grant. That'll be $32,000 that we will be able to spend on anything that FAA has deemed an allowable cost.
Whole amount, no match, right?
No match.
And this is because this has to be back by August 27th?
That's, yes, this has to be returned back to the FAA by August 27th is the reason for the, we amended the agenda to make sure it got on here.
And all we have to do is comply with the audit requirements?
Yep.
Okay.
I make a motion that we authorize city managers sign the acceptance documents for airport rescue grant offer, grant number 3-40-0037-022-2021, for $32,000, item nine.
Did you repeat that?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action to purchase the 2020 John Deere Skid steer group. And I think we want to table that?
Yes, I'm going to ask you to table that. We got a quote in from a local vendor today. Have not had the opportunity to evaluate that quote, and would like that opportunity.
Make the motion that we table item 10.
I'll second. I have a motion in a second.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item 11 is discussion and possible action on items approved during the July 29th, 2021 Convention and Tourism Board Meeting. We'll go to item 11-1, which is the funding of the Main Street in the amount of $30,000 for the 2021, 2022 budget here. So, Mr. Dunham, I'll let you enlighten us.
And you've got my memo there. Basically, it's my understanding from the minutes that Main Street Guyman has requested $15,000 for the year of 2021, which is the budget year we are in, and $15,000 for budget year 2022. and $15,000 for budget year 2022, which is the one we are budgeting for. That, of course, is, that's my understanding from the minutes. We have funded them at the level of $20,000 for the year of 2020. Unfortunately, we have overpaid them for 2020. And the rectification of that is that we either ask them to repay us the money we have overpaid or reduce that money from the amount that we are, for any future awards or pledges that we may give them. The other question on, based on the agenda item, or the agenda approval, was that Convention and Tourism agreed to, I'll just read the motion, was, motion was made to approve MSG funding out of Convention and Tourism if the city council does not, does not approve MSG funding as a general fund line item. For 2021, it is, funding Main Street Guyman is not in the general fund. It is in the Convention and Tourism Fund. We flip-flopped year, flip-flopped around on how we've paid Main Street Guyman. When it's, when we started funding them, we paid them out of Convention and Tourism funds. Then for a few years, we paid them out of general fund. And now we have flipped back in 2018, I think we flipped back to paying them back out of the Convention and Tourism Fund. So that funding mechanism is really up to how the council wants us to fund them, if the council wants us to fund them. And I think that's the discussion for tonight.
Well, I think the discussion for us would be, do we approve the agenda item? Or do we, do we, do we have the, do we decide to put it as a line item when we do the budget rather than a?
I'd like to see it as a line item myself.
Right. Yeah, Main Street, I mean, they put on so many programs.
Yeah, they need to be funded, obviously.
Right.
But we had gone from a line item to requesting that they had to apply.
Right.
And then we kind of, the consideration is to go back to the line.
Right.
It's just where the money's coming from.
Right.
So that's what Mr. Dunham wants to know, where to budget it.
Well, and also where to pay for it, because it's not in the general fund budget this year. It's in the, it's in the Convention and Tourism Fund. Where this line, where this item would be paid for was originally budgeted at $101,000 in Convention and Tourism. Currently, there is $70,608 that could be expended out of that, that has not been yet spent out of that line item.
So we can all, but we can't, we could assure Main Street that we're going to consider it when we go into the budget and it'll be a line item that will reflect the amounts that we've been talking about.
And I think we need to make sure it's from, on a calendar year, not fiscal year. And I think you're running on a fiscal year.
It doesn't matter to us.
Because I think, because our budget is on a calendar year, and I think we need to stipulate that it is on a calendar year.
And that, and that's the way I understood last year's agenda item, was that we were going to pay, I think it was, I think the approved amount was $20,000 to be paid for 2020. And since we run on a calendar year, if we want to pay, you know, and this agenda item is, the way I read it, was $30,000 for '21 and '22. So we would pay $15,000 in 2021, this year, out of budgeted funds. And we would budget for $15,000 to be paid next year.
I was actually under the impression you were still on July to June.
No.
We haven't been since 2012.
Yeah, 2012. Yeah.
So, so, so I guess my question would be, this request for '21, have we paid them any, what did we pay them in '21?
We've paid them $9,480.51 in budget year 2021.
That's the overage.
That's the overage.
That's the overage. I thought we budgeted them for $20,000 for this year. Is that correct?
No, the agenda item for last year was $20,000 for, to be paid in year 2020.
2020?
Yes.
So you actually paid $29,000?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, is we've actually paid $29,000.
Does that match? Does that match your record?
We've been getting monthly invoices.
I really thought we had budgeted $20,000 for 2021 because you came and it was COVID and you said anything would be helpful. And so we went from $30,000 down to $20,000 for this year. For 2021, right?
I'm looking for, I thought I had the agenda item that was approved last year. But that, that agenda item was, yeah, here it is. This agenda item was, Councilmember Mitch Eggers suggested that the city council award the amount of $20,000 to Main Street Guyman since some of the events would not take place that year.
Which had been last year. What, what date is on that?
That agenda, well, that was, well, I don't have the date of the agenda. I've got the date that I printed it out.
June the 9th?
June 9th of 2020. Is when that was approved.
So then you started, you started with?
Said the funding for Main Street Guyman was funded from the hotel motel tax stated, okay. Motion was made to, made to $20,000 to support Main Street Guyman for the year 2020. That was the motion. Right. So that was my understanding that we were going to pay 20, we were going to pay $20,000 in the year of 2020. In that budget year.
And we didn't have, our budget year?
That, our budget year 2020.
And we didn't have anything for the budget or anything else for 2021, for, in our budget?
Not outlined specifically for them. When we pay them as Convention Assistance, we had $101,000 budgeted to pay them.
Convention and Tourism.
The Convention Assistance is the line item we budget, we paid for that out of. Yeah, and that's in the Convention and Tourism budget.
Correct.
You kept invoicing us monthly, yes. That's how the overage happened. We kept getting invoices and we paid them.
So to get back on track, you suggest we don't pay invoices for a while?
Yeah, I'm going to, well, what I'm going to suggest is that if you decide to award them an amount today, that we will reduce that amount that you award them by $9,000, roughly $500 to account for that overage in which we have already paid them. I have discussed this with our, we have discussed this with our auditors. They are in agreement that will be an acceptable way to rectify that.
Gotcha.
Would it be proven that before we do anything that we see maybe a timeline of everything that's involved? So we know exactly where we were?
I would like that too because I.
I think we're all talking three different ways.
I mean, I don't know, I guess I don't understand what you, what you're asking for in a timeline.
Well, in other words, when.
We're talking about a money, how money's changed hands or?
Let me explain it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
First off, we've got, we've got, you read us the agenda item.
Yes.
Back from June. So maybe make the comparison of what we did in a timeline from June to the end of the year, which we were paying monthly.
Yes.
But was, also, my question would be, was since they were under the assumption we were on a fiscal year, and I think maybe Mr. Eggers did, that the $20,000 was for a fiscal year from June to July, or from July 1 to June. So actually, it might, might have carried over into the first six months of 2020. I'd kind of like to have that all clarified before I make a decision.
Well, here's our opportunity to get back on track and do the annual.
Right, because this zeros us out for the end of this year.
Yeah.
Approving this, and then with it being on the budget for next year, we don't have to worry about it being.
We don't have to worry about it. Correct.
Approving this now zeroes us some out because of what was in that.
Have we paid them for July?
Verbiage.
In our office?
That's a good question.
Yes, we have paid July. We paid $27,000, $2727.27.
When you take $20,000 divided by 12, it's $1,700. It's not quite that, but that's, you know, rounded out.
Right.
So how did we pay them $2700?
Well, we took $20,000 and divided it by six because you approved, it was approved in June.
So we paid them what?
We, we paid them in July of 2020, we paid them $2,467.55. In August, I'll just pass that down and send you the numbers.
Thank you.
That's, that's the outline of how they have been paid since the approval of the $20,000.
So actually, we should not have paid them in July, anything.
No. Actually, we should have quit paying them not, roughly $9,500 ago. About three months ago.
Yeah, we somehow, okay. I'm like you, I'd like to see a spreadsheet to find out this exactly and figure out what we can pay them between August 1st and through December. And then get back on track January 1st.
Well, it seems to me if we delay, then we're going to be off track and it'll be some odd number that we have to throw out there later. It seems to make sense to me because it was approved in the middle of last year and only approved for that year, which means it ended in January.
It didn't though.
No, the payments kept going.
The payments kept going.
Right.
That approved them out, which is why we have now.
Well, we're 9, $9,500 bucks.
Right.
And, and how is that utilized, the $9,500 bucks? Was that just programs, events? The overage? You're right, because now, because now the way it happens, Main Street goes to Convention and Tourism instead of city council for, for funds. That's how it works now.
We eventually approved.
It was supposed to be a line item. It was actually voted on for it to stay the line item. We didn't understand why they were there. So the reason that Mr. Swager, he actually, I think, was the one who presented this one. And I believe the reason is because he wants it to be a line item again. It should go back through the city.
Right.
Instead of, because there was other items also that have never come back to us that have stayed a line item. But for some reason, Main Street Guyman, you back to Tourism, but other items stayed a line item and just went straight through city.
They were all supposed to at one time, and I don't know.
Something happened.
I'd still like, I'd still like to see a spreadsheet before we.
So what do you want on this spreadsheet, Mayor? Like, do you want how the money was allotted and paid?
Well, just, just kind of, I don't know, I guess it'd be a timeline of showing when we approved it, what we've done historically. That's, that's just me. And if the rest of you don't want it, that's fine.
Yeah.
Councilman Swager, would you show him that? Would that be similar to what you were looking for, only a longer time period?
What I'm worried about is being okay with our auditors.
Pass that down. This is, there's, LaVona's prepared a different one for, started back at 2010 on how it was paid, how it was paid.
Yeah, I'm the same as you, Sergio, but it seems like we've already talked to the auditors. This is kosher as it stands.
But somebody tell me what happened between March and July?
COVID.
Of this year?
I mean, we didn't get any invoices, so we didn't pay anything last year?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
That invoice that you see in 2020, that first one that's dated March, is actually an overpayment for 2019. And we caught it after we paid that first payment. And then we recalculated and then see that left us a balance of $17,000 something? You see that $20,000, that's a balance of $17,000?
Right.
Then we divided that $17,000 by eight or six or seven months. Because they didn't go back before city council until June.
Right.
And so we wanted to pay the $17,000 off this year. So we divided that by 7,000 and see that section over there in the orange?
Mm-hmm.
That's the amount that we, I thought that we told them to pay or to invoice us.
That's what it should have been, yeah.
And they did for two months. And then they reverted back to 2019's invoice amount.
Hence the $9,000 over.
Right.
Going forward, when this is a line item, they're not going to have to invoice us every month, are they?
No, my recommendation was that, well, they would invoice us for the amount that you approve of, and we will pay that invoice. Be done with it.
Right.
If we paid them $2,467.55 for the last five months of the year, including August, and subtract the $9,000 that they owe us, or $9,500, that leaves us about $3,000 that we could actually drive and check for to get through the end of the month, the end of the year.
If in, in July, in June of 2020, when it was approved, the $20,000 was approved, there was an overage of $2,727.27 from the previous year, from 2019. That was reduced from the $20,000. And then what LaVona had done is taken the $17,000 that was to be paid out for the remainder of the year and divide that by seven. And if we would have paid at that 20, that rate, $2,467, at December, we would have, for the December payment, we would have been at zero for $20,000.
Well, like I said, if we paid them the $2,467 that they'd been billing us through the end of the year and you subtract the $9,480, that leaves $2,857.74. And that makes it.
Okay, I'll.
Back to even until we get a budget for next year.
I'll trust your math on that. I'm not going to go back and try to recalculate your math on it. So what I'm understanding you to say is that we would basically award Main Street Guyman $2,727.27 from August to December. Reduce that amount by the $9,000 that is already overpaid.
Right.
And call it good for 2021.
Right.
And then in 2022, we will budget that money as a line item in the general fund.
Right, when we do our budgeting for next year.
In the amount. We, this, the, the motion that's at our feet right now is to approve what Convention and Tourism has approved, so essentially.
That's if we take it out of the general fund.
So if I understand this correctly, we have to deny this, they have to go back to Convention and Tourism?
No.
No.
No?
No, they don't have to go back.
The, the motion by Convention and Tourism was to pay it out of Convention and Tourism if City Council did not put it as a line item in the general fund.
Well, this clears it up for this year, and then we go forward to 2022.
So what's that on? Make a motion?
Well, what's left is $2,857.74 after we subtract the $9,480. Any suggestions, Mr. Patty?
Yeah, the only suggestion I have is everyone needs to recognize all tax dollars collected, whether they come from sale of a loaf of bread or motel room, those are general fund monies. And the Tourism Board can make recommendations, but the expenditure only comes with authority of the council.
Right, yeah.
So, and you can have a, you can budget a line item, you know, at the beginning of the year, that you're going to budget an item for use for tourism purposes, but those are always general fund monies, and that's something everybody, I have to mention this every few years because we have changes, but it's always general fund monies, and the council has ultimate authority where that money is spent.
What do you want to budget for next year as a line item?
30,000.
30,000.
What does that do to your books?
Because the way I understood it, because I was at that meeting, was that, yes, we came, during the COVID year, we asked for 20,000. We lost it, and it was granted, right?
Wait, 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 come up to the microphone so we can.
My nature's that it gets confused.
Mine too.
So it was my understanding, in 2020, we came, we asked, we got awarded 20,000. Then we were told we had to go back to Convention and Tourism for the 2021 budget, which was with the 30,000 that we asked for, because we were under the assumption that it was a July to June, and that hence the 2022. So we were asking for the 30,000 for 2021. If you do what you're saying, then you're going to go back to 20,000 for 2021, and that was just my question. Is that what you're?
No, we're not. Right now, we're trying to figure out how to get $9,480 back.
Right. And in the way you were talking about it.
We were going to give you $2,500 a month, like it was stipulated until the end of the year, but we got.
Okay, that would give us 20,000 if you subtract the 9,000 out?
No, it'll give you $2,857.
How much months? How much month will we pay?
24,000, 2,400.
Every month for the past six months, it's 27, 27.
What we actually paid the last few months is 2,700, $27.27.
Yeah, the last few months, we've been paying them 27.79.
So if you take that times eight, because we're on, or seven, I don't have my calculator up here, I can't do it in my head.
Five.
But if you take what you've already paid us, and you said it was an overpayment.
Take you through July, so you've got August, September, October, November, December, five.
Okay.
Five months.
Okay, so I'm just not.
Times, say 3,000, that's $15,000. You owe us 10. You take 10 off the 15, you get five.
Right, but I think that's where I was confused, is because for 2021, we were asking for 30, and you're going to convert it back to 15.
20.
No, converting it back to 20.
Converted it back to 20 when we asked for 30. Okay. It was just. Because the line item we thought was for a year, the 30,000 was for a year.
But that's for next year.
Okay.
So you were doing a fiscal year.
We were doing a fiscal year for 2021, 2022.
July 1st to June 30th.
Was 30,000.
We operated on a calendar year, and we've had for.
Okay.
Since 2012.
Yeah.
So then if you go back to 20,000 for 2021, is what you guys are talking about?
No, no, 2021, line item, 30K.
2022.
Sorry, 2022.
Right, right. No, I understand that, but for 2021?
For 2021, it's.
20,000.
Basically 20,000.
20,000.
Right.
Okay.
If, if my math is correct, and I won't, if my math is correct, if we pay them for the next five months, August through December, the 27,000, 27, 2,727.27, that would be, for the next five months, would be 13,636.51. You back the 9,480 out of it, and you got 4,156.27.
I was using the 24 or something.
Right.
Okay.
Because if you use the 27 something for a month.
I was confused about what the overall amount was. I wasn't confused about. I was confused about the overall amount, because I can, I was thinking that our budget was 30,000 for 2021, 30,000 for 2022.
Using the 2,700, that is 30,000 a year.
Okay.
So if you use the 2,700, like I say, you're talking $15,000 roughly, and you take off the 10, you got five.
Okay, okay.
Right, yeah.
So is that how we wanted to do it? That, what that, what was the figure, 4,000?
If my math is correct, and I would want to certainly recheck my math, would be the balance to be paid to Main Street Guiman for 2021 would be 4,156.27.
And that would make our auditor.
That would make the, that would, yeah, that would get us back to zero for 2022.
So 2020 was 20K, 2021, 20K, 2022 will be 30K.
21 figures 30,000.
This out, the, the payments we've been paying them, and the payments we're going to continue to pay, and we'll give them 30, we've over 9,000, so we're, we're reducing that.
Yeah, that's what it is. They were billing us for 30,000 a year, but we all, we were only authorized in 20,000.
Okay, that's, that's the line item, that's what I'm talking about.
Right.
Authorized for 20 in 2020, 2021, but we gave them 30 in 2020.
Overpaying them, right, because they were billing us.
Okay, that's, that's what she was asking, that she thought that we had awarded 30K to Main Street.
Well, it says right there it was 20 at a June meeting. He's double checking his figures.
Well, I'm, I'm figuring out what it would be at the 2024 level, the 2,467 dollar level, because that's one of the levels you've talked about.
Come up to the podium. Charlie, if you would, please come up to the mic.
We're not going to be, going forward, we'll go to budget for 20K.
We operate on a calendar year.
Yeah.
So if you want to do business with us, we do business.
Why have we been asked to come forward in June every year?
I don't understand that. I don't understand why.
Well, when it was a budget line item, you came in when we were doing the budget.
Right.
Okay. So moving forward for next year, when do we need to?
You can probably October.
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 So in a couple of months, we need to come back and ask for the next year? Well, we start, we start making the budget in September, right?
Yeah, I mean, actually, from what I understand, the discussion here tonight would be that that amount would be approved during our budget process. I would just, I would take their request. They came in, they said, okay, $30,000 is what we would want. I put that into the budget, and then when y'all approve the budget, y'all have approved that payment.
Right.
And then that payment will start in January?
January.
Okay. And then we, then we'll revisit next year when, when, October, September?
Yeah.
And we don't need to go to Convention Tourism again?
No.
No.
Not if we're making it a line item.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of confusion, so we want to go back to the line item. So you, is that your motion? Yeah, check figures or we want tables.
Captain Calculator, let's get that out.
For 4,000, I, I, I don't think it hurt to table it until next month. At the most, we're going to give them 5, you know, 4,700.
I don't think it'll hurt.
Yeah, I guess it doesn't matter, right? Or we could authorize to keep making those monthly payments as the invoice.
I wouldn't know, we can't, because they already owe us almost 2,000.
So, so you just move on? Do you want us to, you want to table this now and then move on to 11-2?
Yeah.
Okay. The way we get all our ducks.
I'll make a motion that we table item number 11-1.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to table it until we have a good, firm number.
Setser?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Okay.
Uh, 11-2.
Okay.
There's multiple.
11-2 was a request for funding, funding the Veterans Honor Banner Program, the amount of $10,686. Discussion has been had that our street department has always stepped up in furnished brackets, replacement brackets, any repairs we need to make. Is that not correct, Mr. Hernandez? So we've, we've basically covered the cost and done those things, and we've never, I don't know that there's ever been any, anything of us not taking care of those folks on a very timely basis. So the discussion's been is, do we need to pass that motion or just table indefinitely?
I would, we can deny it in reality, because we've already decided, Mr. Dunham, we're going to continue piecemealing those brackets like we have in the past, and so when the American Legion comes and asks you, if Martin, if, you know, we need 10 brackets or what, Martin will go to Joe Don.
I just want, I'm on Tourism Board, I just want you to know that the American Legion is actually not even a sponsor, because Chuck Krone said he lied on the paperwork for it. So he kind of used tourism as a way to get in front of City Council, which kind of.
We're not going to fund it. Well, he was told to go to Tourism Board, so we're not going to fund it.
Right.
So you said he lied on his application?
Yes, Sidney said that American Legion is not even for the flags, that he, I mean, he said he lied on it. He said because it just, it asked for sponsors, so he just wrote something down.
They had to put the sponsor down.
And he used our Tourism Board as a joke, is how I feel about it, to get in front of City Council instead of going the correct way. And also, the $10,686, he said the city always pays for it anyway, we just want it in a lump sum now, and that.
Well, he was trying to save money. There was a, a price increase effective today.
Right, but that should have gone in front of the city and in front of Joe Don, and never actually come in front of Tourism.
And so he was trying to save the money.
If you fund either one of these through Tourism and go ahead and say they're okay, then you're opening up every single meeting and.
We're not going to.
For people to do that, so.
Well, just, just to be on the same, we are totally for this program.
I am too.
But keeping, keeping inventory that we are not aware of, you know, it's going to change in the future, we're going to go to different bracket, I mean, if we're doing it on a case-by-case basis, and it's working right now, I don't see the need for more inventory.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's how I, I felt about it too. And I mean, it's the fact that the mayor and I were one time in a meeting with somebody who came to Tourism and lied on their paperwork, and we had to deny him. I mean, it, it just is kind of like, I, you can't do that through Tourism. I think that he should have just gone straight through the city, and I, I do believe in it. I think it is something that needs to happen, and I think it is. I think that you guys are already buying him and doing what you need to do, so.
All right.
It's just.
I'll make a motion that we deny the banner program and continue doing it as piecemeal like we have in the past.
I second that.
Have a motion in second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item 11-dash-11.3 is funding for the American Legion Post 33 for the purchase of poles and flags for the cemetery's Avenue of Flags in the amount of $5,187. Anybody jump on that one?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay.
Because I like your recommendation anyway.
All right, well, um, the motion was, and I'll kind of start there, was made that the, was made to fund the program with the stipulation that council makes the budget amendment to reverse the Convention and Tourism, reimburse the Convention in term for the funds. It's my opinion, and it would be my recommendation, that this request, or this program get pushed to the Cemetery Board, since it is cemetery property, and they've kind of been left out of the loop. It is, we do have a Cemetery Board meeting tomorrow at noon. It is on that agenda to discuss tomorrow at noon.
Here you go.
So I think it's the Cemetery Board that ought to be making the decisions on what happens at the cemetery.
I agree.
Or making the recommendations, I'm sorry, not the decisions, making the recommendations.
I agree.
So again, we should probably deny this one as well then. Yeah. Well, then I make a motion to deny the American Legion Post 33 purchase for poles and flags at the Cemetery Avenue of Flags in the amount of $5,187. Second.
Have a motion in second.
Swager?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
And also, that is, that we're still in support of those.
Total support of these programs, for sure.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think reveals that we're not in support of it, it's just.
But it can be swung that way.
I just wanted that to be part of the list.
It could be presented that way.
Get that on the record.
All right. Moving on, agenda item number 12, this discussion.
Now, you guys, we want to, can we go ahead?
I'm sorry. Sorry. Go ahead.
Agenda item number 12, discussion of possible action to purchase body cameras for the Guiman Police Department from WatchGuard video for $66,360.
And.
Do you have a demonstration, Chief?
Chief, chief's back there, he's hiding, but he can fill in any gaps that I may leave. It's a budgeted purchase. We planned on it to be bought this budget year. The budget amount was $70,000, so it's come in under budget by $3,640.
No, not really.
Oh.
Plot twist.
Basically, what we're trying to do, Council, is, you know, there's a growing trend in, in, in our realm of business to, to do person-to-person, basically recordings of interactions, whether it be for customer service reasons or for court reasons. You know, we've entered a realm in society where if it isn't on video, it didn't happen, or if it's, it wasn't written on paper, it didn't happen. So, you know, that's where we are today. Several years ago, we started the investment in WatchGuard video in our car systems. We record HD video. It automatically uploads into our, into a server at our station, so it, it has a evidence integrity. The officers never have to basically touch it. They pull up to the station, it brings it in wirelessly, and it maintains the integrity of the video evidence. This is basically expanding upon that already invested technology. The whole quote, if, if you look at it, it's not all just body cameras. In order to move into the body camera realm, about three years ago, we had to replace our camera server. Well, those things have about a five-year life expectancy. WatchGuard offers two different body cameras. Their very first version, which would operate on our current server, and they also have a newer version that operates on a better operating system, and they're more slimline. and they also have a newer version that operates on a better operating system, and they're more slimline. They have a removable battery. They're more a usable device. I mean, it's obviously their newer version. In order for that version to work, we have to actually obtain a new server, because it operates on a different operating system. And I've, I've visited with Jim and made sure that that stuff all is good for our stuff, and, and he agreed it would work fine. So a part of that expense is actually obtaining a new server, which would give us another five years down the road of hopeful life expectancy. Enough space in order to capture not only our car camera video, but also the body camera video. And there is a device that has to change in the cars, and that's kind of where the rest of that money comes in to pay to have that stuff installed. So basically, it has a docking station in the car, so all of that stuff integrates when it goes into the server. The car camera as well as the body camera. And then there's some technical services of the, of the company doing, you know, the migration of video from one server to the next and so forth.
Any questions?
How long will it take to get them?
Uh, I don't know. They're a new device. I, I would say probably within sixty days would, would be a good benchmark.
Forty-three terabytes usable storage. That's pretty, that's a lot.
Well, you gotta, you gotta remember, our stuff is recording in high-definition video.
Yeah, it's good.
And multiple units at once.
It's good to have that.
So it, you know, it eats up a little more space.
Yeah. And how long are we keeping the video on server? I guess it depends on case by case, huh?
Depending on the reason for the, I guess, interaction would be the right word. There's a set level of how long it keeps it on the server. If it's any type of court case, it's ma, it's, it's thrown on there and for a year.
Yeah.
And.
Are you required to have any offsite storage besides the storage at the police station?
No.
You're not?
Basically, how that works is when we have a case, obviously, the video comes into our office. If it's a court case, we basically send, like, the district attorney, or if it's municipal court, we send them a link on, in the cloud, basically, and they have a password, and they have fifteen days for them to pull that video, and they can watch it, or they can burn it to a disk if they need it for their court case and stuff, so that, so we're not burning video. It, it just works better.
You know what type of encryption they're using for the, for the video?
That is not in my realm of speech.
Probably don't want to make that, I don't want to make that public anywhere.
What, you want to hack into it?
No, I'm just wondering what kind they were using.
Okay. I, I honestly don't know. If, if somebody told me, I don't know that I could relate to you, so.
It's pretty, it's pretty standard, right?
Yes.
This setup among law enforcement, right? They're, they're a known company, is what I'm getting at.
We've, we've had WatchGuard videos since two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So we have a good relationship with them. We're very satisfied with their product.
Big to go. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? We have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of body cameras for the Guinean Police Department from the WatchGuard video for sixty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second?
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number thirteen, are there any public comments or announcements? Public comments or announcements? If not, we'll move to agenda item fourteen, reports from committees, council members, and city manager.
I have a couple of, it's not reports, it's addressing the city manager on, the construction that's going on, new houses and the new additions. Did we get somebody from the city to do inspections? Inspection, inspection help?
Actually, the gentleman we have that is helping with those inspections is out of Tulsa. He does inspections. He's a licensed inspector for all trades. He actually serves on the, the board for licensees, for inspectors.
Okay.
And he's coming in and helping with those and ma, helping with those inspections, yes.
Okay, so we are getting assistance in the inspection of that construction?
Yes, we are.
Okay, because, you know, we went through this once. I want to make sure that when these houses go up, there's no backlash. The city is still going to get blamed for it, even though it's not, not the city building them, because it's our responsibility to make sure that everything is done up to spec. I just want to avoid that.
I do too.
Well, you remember, the department had said that night that they were guaranteed that everything would be inspected.
That's, but I'm touching it on it again. I want to make sure.
We have been inspecting, inspecting them, and I have a meeting with the developer, with inspectors, and the construction foreman tomorrow.
Okay. Because I'm going to, I'm touching on this a little bit, because we got bit by it last time. I, I have drove out on the properties a couple of times, and they're just, it seems like some stuff is not being done up to code. So this is just me from a vehicle looking on a construction site. Pretty sure if OSHA drove through there, there'd be some issues. And OSHA is pretty painful when it comes to that, if OSHA does come around. I'm not saying that they will, I'm just.
And OSHA would, OSHA would be, the, the construction company would be responsible for any of the OSHA requirements.
Understood, yes, true. But as far as code inspection, that is the city's responsibility.
It is the city's responsibility, and we do have, right now, once, with the contractor, two people on staff doing those, doing those inspections.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I've, I've got a question concerning if the plat has not been filed correctly, how have we been able to give them building permits?
Well, um.
What do you mean? Maybe explain.
It's never been filed correctly.
Well, we haven't approved, the board of, the board of adjustment and the planning commission has not approved the final plat yet.
We've approved a preliminary.
But the preliminary plat has never been filed. Do you file those?
We don't file, that's the, to my understanding, that's the developer's responsibility to file those plats, not the city's.
Well, my concern is, how have we been able to give them building permits if it hasn't been filed?
Well, we have been issuing building permits. We have got house numbers for those, for the houses that are being constructed now.
Yeah, but if there's not any a plot or lot number in that, how can you give them permits?
Well, that's getting into a legal aspect that actually I'm going to defer to Mr. Petty on, because I don't know an answer to it.
They, they can begin construction on a, on a preliminary plat. They have to post their bonds.
Right.
So that in order to get the final plat approved, they then have to come show that they've constructed in compliance with the regulations.
But does a preliminary plat have to be filed and recorded?
Preliminary, no.
No?
No, you don't file it. The filing comes with the final plat.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anybody?
I've driven out there to, to those construction sites, and I know, speaking for the one further north, it looks fine. The only questionable one is the one that Mr. Kidwell had problems with last week. But I was out there the day after Kidwell had those complaints, and I didn't see any dirt being washed out or anything like that, so. But I do respect the legitimate concerns, because I hear it from the public all the time, and I'm, you know, we have to reassure the public that it's being taken care of, because we did have problems. Legitimate concerns.
The problems last that were mentioned were drainage issues, right?
Right, yeah.
Kidwell brought up.
Yeah. I didn't see any of those, but I'm also not a.
You can, you can see where water built up on the west side and on the south side.
Right, but not, not to where it went down to Kidwell's place, though. Did you see that?
I think we're getting way off.
We are, of course, we are. We are. But we do need to, I guess, one item would be drainage issues, but you took notes last meeting, so we're aware. I don't have anything else.
Uh, the only thing I've got, a couple of things. The municipal league conference is coming up September seventh through ninth in Oklahoma City, if anybody wants to attend. Get with Joe Don, and they'll fix it up. Getting real close. I've been in a lot of meetings on the ARPA funding. We're going to get the states finally, I think, I think they've just requested their funding from the federal government. So they, that kicks in, once they get that done, it kicks in a thirty-day period to finalize rulemaking for the ARPA funds. They can also ask for thirty, the state could ask for a thirty-day extension, which they probably will. But we will receive half of our funding once those rules are complete. I think we're in line for about one point eight million.
One point nine was the last number that I heard.
We'll get half of that initially, and we'll get the second half in a year. We don't have to spend it till 2024. There'll be some stipulations on it, but it's something, it's not like the COVID money, where it's got to burn a, burn a hole in your pocket. We've got some, got some time to plan what we'd like to do with it. And the kiddos, remember everybody, Friday, even though I've got a granddaughter, said she wasn't going back to school Friday. And my wife said, well, why not? You're fired up to going back to school. And she said, it's Friday the thirteenth. I'm, I'm not going. That's a bad day to start school. I'm not going till Monday, but I think she'll be there. But anyway, remember, the kids are back at school, so.
Slow down.
Leave the house a little early in the morning. Don't drive crazy.
Slow down.
Because the kids, they're the most important thing we've got. That's all I've got.
Ready?
Make it short and sweet.
I'll try to make it, I'll try to make it short and sweet.
Third.
Uh, do want to hit the revenue, the financials just a little bit. You received my report today, or I hope you received my report today. If you did not, let me know. General fund, as auditors talk about, we're looking really good this year. We've received about eight, so far, we've received about eighty percent of our, our estimated annual revenues. We've only expended about fifty-three percent of our expenditures for the general fund. The enterprise fund is a little different condition. We've received forty-one percent of our estimated revenues, and we've expended thirty-four percent. That's actually expended. Uh, we have several invoices that will be coming up within the year that will make that more in line. Sales tax, we are, well, just boil down, so far in sales tax collections, we started off the year a little rough, but now we've made up for that. We're currently about, we collected for the month of July about fourteen and a half percent more than what we collected in July of 2021. And we are actually eight percent ahead of where we would need to be at this time if we, to meet our budget projections. Use tax, same way. We are about eight percent ahead of where we need to be, even though we started out rough this year. We're eight percent ahead of where we should be to meet our budget projections for sales tax and use tax. Utilities is a little different story. To meet our budget projections, we're actually about five percent behind where we should be at this time. Hope, we're hoping that a strong fall will boost those numbers up. And that is all I've got for the financials. Of course, the mayor has already hit on OML, so I won't belittle that, belabor that. But I do, do want to say and make the announcement that unfortunately, Police Chief Michael Bad turned in his retirement papers to me today, or notice today. Papers come shortly after. I think his last day is the twenty-sixth of August? Twenty-seventh of August. He's had a long and distinguished career with the city of Guinean.
He's retiring to be our sign man now, is that what?
This will be his last council meeting.
That's not enough time. I think he's got to stay.
Well, I tried to figure out how to make him longer, but I just couldn't justify doing it. Uh, I do want to make a warning, you know, just to, well, give notice out that last week, we had a shaft break on well number fifteen. Uh, today, we had a motor burn-up on well number fourteen. So last week, we were pushing eighty-seven percent of water pumping capacity. We're going to be looking, we're probably going to be looking at higher numbers than that. When we get up into the nineties, we start getting really concerned about being able to recover overnight. Just letting you know that. They were pulling the well, they were pulling fifteen to ensure that the, that was the shaft that was broken to get it replaced, and then they were going to move over to well fourteen to see about what repairs needed to be made on those today. Don't have any other word on that yet, but I'll keep you informed. We will be going out for, bid on, the bid documents will be advertised on August thirteenth for the Saddle Ridge Trails gas line. Bid opening is going to be September sixteenth. See, we're working, well, the rest of these report items I've given to you in written format over the past month, and I'll let you just review those, and if you've got any questions, please get me, holler at me, and I'll get you the answers. And Councilman Alvedres, was that short enough for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody have anything they'd like to add? If not, we will stand adjourned.
Have a good evening.
Thank you all for coming today.